Call to meeting, do over for March the 10th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Ms. Spears, here. Mr. Bennet. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Chaucie.
Here.
Reverend Custer.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Ms. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Stoborski. Mr. Vlasky.
Here.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment's silence, please.
Before we have the moment of silence, I'd like to remember Eugene Pavone, who was a coach up in Cambridge Springs, young coach who tragically passed away this past week. Good evening, everyone. We're going to enter into our committee at the whole time, and we'll begin here this evening with Cambridge Springs Junior High student Ella. Come and share with us, please.
Good evening. I'm your host, Ella Maria, and this is Cambridge Speaks' Tell Ella Everything School Board Edition. That intro, or at least something like it, should sound familiar to you if you follow Cambridge Speaks on Spotify and tune into all of our podcasts. This is another great way to find out what the students in Cambridge Springs have been doing to get to know them better. Last week, I interviewed Royal Reno Goss, the first Cambridge Springs girls wrestler to make it to state playoffs. The whole school then flooded the halls to send her off. She is one of our death students, and we congratulated her in sign language down the hall. This is Congratulations. Spring sports are starting up very soon, which we're all very excited about as we go into new seasons. The Key Club asked the school for donations last week of old T-shirts in order to make dog toys for needy puppies. There was a donation bin in the lobby and a few adorable posters up in the hallways. Last Friday, all of the students enjoyed a donut and juice for exhibiting good lunch behavior. Two weeks ago was Business Week here at CSAHS. All juniors had fun, and the winning team, led by CEO Brandon Hoover and CFO Mackenzie Mulligan, whose company was Custom Kicks, went home with a little more happy and a fresh $100 bill in their pocket. Next Friday, March 14th, or 314, you know, 3.14, meaning Pi Day. To celebrate, some of Mr. Mumaw's higher-level math classes will be traveling to Penn West Edinburgh in order to learn more and do different math games and learning activities. In front of you, you can find the Pitchfork, the latest addition. I think it's one of our best personally, so check it out and continue to keep up with us on all social medias at Cambridge Speaks. And see who the mystery Lefrecon is on the front cover, and if anybody else wants one, we have an extra. Thank you.
Thank you. PEA representative, Debbie Miller.
Good evening, Pencrest stakeholders, school board members, administration, faculty, and families. My name is Debbie Miller, president of the Pencrest Area Education Association. Let me begin by taking a moment also to honor the life of Eugene Pavone, a Cambridge Springs High School grad, my former student, and a coach in our boys' basketball program, as well as others. Over the years, I've seen him volunteer in so many different capacities, in both the elementary and high schools, and even in the community. I know there will be a big hole in the Cambridge community and in our hearts. It got me thinking of how much month after month we see the list of volunteers listed in our agendas, and that we should be so grateful for these people like Eugene, who selflessly give themselves for the betterment of our schools and the families that they serve. I would also like to thank the board and Mr. Ford and Mrs. Feely for the new direction of communication by implementing the Community Engagement Nights, with the first rendition hosted by Cambridge Springs High School. It was refreshing to start the evening with a look at, as Mrs. Cooper stated, what makes Cambridge Springs special. It is such a turning point to have our district looking at the positive things taking place in our schools. I am certain that we will all end up hearing about amazing things happening in each attendance area. And following the presentation, I appreciate the open dialogue that was provided for the community to ask questions and bring concerns to the board's attention. So often in the past, community members could speak at the board, but that communication was a one-way street. We all know that little gets accomplished when dialogue is one-sided. Let's just call it what it was, not dialogue, but statements, none of which could be verified and certainly not resolved. So I sincerely applaud this board for making a huge step forward with a place for open and honest conversations. I was recently talking to a community member who asked, "What's going on at those board meetings these days?" To which I responded, "Actually, much is happening, with a focus on leading our district back to the top, and the board has faith in who they have entrusted as leaders. They really don't spend much time, if any, on the bickering and the nonsense." So it is with this refreshing change that we move into the difficult and somewhat tense budget season. As I mentioned last month, I hope for Pencrest to be ahead of the game with the changes at the federal level, and to put ourselves in a position to obtain the maximum funding from the state. At a recent presentation from our region president for PSEA, Jan Pearson, she tallied the amount of funding for just Title I from the federal government that would potentially be lost by the elimination of the Department of Ed. Twenty-five million in the Northwest Region, that's just our little corner of Pennsylvania. And more pointedly, Pencrest will be losing potentially $821,653. It is not likely that the federal coffers will just send that money year March for our students. It will go through another filter in the Pennsylvania government. So we need to act now to align our district to be awarded those funds. And finally, as we budget, we need to hold true to our word of not negatively impacting class size again. Instead, let's vow to improve that by moving in the opposite direction and decreasing it. Our students win when class sizes are small, and students get more attention from the skilled professional in charge of their learning. It's simple math, and trust me, I'm an English teacher, so I'm no good at math, but if you divide the attention of a teacher by 30, or you divide it by 20, kids get more when class size is small. Budgets are tough, but let's vow not to balance it on the back of our students. I'm confident that if we listen to the stakeholders, and as my dad always said, the boot's on the ground, this can be done. As I always say, your teachers, your educational specialists are here to help. Include us in that dialogue, even if it's the budget. Thank you.
Some of the updates that I have, first is the, for the board, is the calendar. You see the proposed calendar there for next year. Wanted to see if there were any questions, any concerns on that calendar. Couple of the highlights of the calendar. First day of, first student day would be Wednesday, August 27th. Last student day would be June 5th, which would be a half-day. The Christmas break, just the way it falls this year, will be a long break for our students. And so that will begin on the 22nd for the students, and they won't come back until the Monday, the 5th. So it will be a long break, just some contractual obligations that we have to do to meet that. So that's what it looks like. After bringing up a couple ideas last month, I got clear direction from the board where not to go, so we made sure those are in there. And so, any questions on anything on the calendar? The, you'll see under New Business tonight, you will see the Crawford Career, the Joint Operating Committee of the Crawford County Career and Technical Center approved and is recommending the Masero Corporation to complete demolition and the construction of the outer shell of the Crawford Tech Annex, including the improved alternatives outlined in the bid specs, in the amount of $687,000. Part of their bylaws and their processes for each of the sending districts to have to approve that. What we are not, that is not a cost to Pencrest, that's just the cost of the project, and they have the funds set aside for that, so that's not costing us, but we still have to approve that. So I wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that before we vote on it tonight.
I'll explain the reason why they do that. They don't have a school board like we do. We send three members, Crawford Central sends three members, and Quine School, that makes up their school board. They don't have an elected board like we do. So that's why they have to bring it back to our district to get the approval.
Any questions on that? The next thing I have, you'll see under the, actually, the calendar was under the education part. You're going to hear it from Patty a long time tonight, because Patty has the biggest section, so. But one other thing under there that I just wanted to draw your attention to is the MO, the Memorandum of Understanding. That's a pastoral memorandum, and with the district, and as we have utilized other outside agencies, that's what this memorandum is. It's a, it's an agreement, and it's to support our students. It would be completely voluntary. The parents would sign and agree to that, and it would just be another option to assist our students going through difficult times or struggling, or if there's something going on in the community, that's what that would be there for. Again, parents have to sign off. It's an agreement between the parents and the pastor, all right? And then we're just allowing, we allow the space for students to meet, and so it'd be similar to the other approvals we've made with MOUs with other organizations. So just wanted to go over that with you to make sure you're aware, any questions you have for me on that. It's a busy time in Pencrest. One thing, I had the opportunity to go up to Cambridge Springs, and they had Business Week last week, and saw some great projects, and I believe it's going on in Segertown this week, and coming up at Maplewood. And so if you get an opportunity and you so desire to go out and check out the Business Week as a board member, it's pretty impressive what the students do during that week. I was, I saw a little bit last year at Segertown and seeing, going around and seeing the projects that were happening up at Cambridge. I just came away so impressed with the creativity, with the critical thinking. It really is the type of education that we want our students engaged in, and so I applaud not only our educators who are doing this, the students, the community volunteers, we have community members coming in, giving their time, some the whole week, and so I just applaud that. We finished up here, winter sports season, with wrestling here this past weekend. We're into spring sports. It actually feels like spring outside tonight, so this week looks pretty nice, and then next week, when the games start, it starts to get 40s and 50s and back to a little rain, but that's all right, that's, we'll take a little bit of this. I know I'm smiling a little bit more than I have the last few months, and so it's been a busy time. I'll let Mrs. Feely talk about the Bachi, too. You can fill that in, then, on that a little bit, too. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Feely to go over the education report.
Okay, we have a lot of items on the agenda for approval this month, starting with general student travel. We have some band and chorus students heading to regionals, and we have volleyball teams, the Segertown volleyball team and the Maplewood softball team heading to other, the softball team's headed to South Carolina, and the volleyball team is headed to Northeastern. Those are on the agenda. We have a lot of speakers. Again, our teachers are doing a great job of bringing community members in, volunteers in to speak with our students, so you'll see a list of them again this month, as well as some donated books for both Segertown Elementary School, and then a list of books for Maplewood Elementary's Title One night. We'll be asking the board for approval to run our extended school year program this summer, and this is the start of that process. So once we get approval for that, then we can start planning, and then we'll bring forward the number of sections we need once we have our full enrollments. Any questions on any of those so far? Try not to go too fast. You'll see an agreement for the Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth. That's an annual agreement we do with Bethesda. Pencrest has 10 seats in the program. We've been maintaining that for at least the past 15 years and well before that. You'll see tonight on the agenda our 2025-26 Secondary Program of Study. There were minor changes made to the Program of Study. We were able to add to that program an option, an elective option for theater arts. After talking with staff, that was one of the areas we felt we had enough staff to be able to offer that as an option and included in our schedule with our current staffing in each building, so that's been added. We updated also some of the science progression and changed what grade level biology, the biology course will be taken, it'll now be in grades nine or 10. It gives us a little more flexibility that way, instead of everybody taking it in ninth You'll also see on the agenda an exciting opportunity for Pitt dual enrollment. So this starts the process where our students can enroll in some courses through Pitt and get three graduate credits at an extremely reduced rate. And then we'll also be looking into an opportunity for some of our teachers to teach courses that Pitt offers already to our students. So it would be our teachers teaching our students, and our students getting three Pitt credits. So it's a great opportunity for all of our students and families. Any credit you can get towards that degree is a huge money savings, and a Pitt credit will transfer just about anywhere, so it gives them a lot of opportunities outside of that. We're also looking, you'll see on the agenda, the, our units of study in grades three through five. We're about three years out on our literacy, full curriculum adoption. So Mossflower has updated the grades three through five units to become more in line with structured literacy and the science of reading. So we're able to get in because we're a partner school, and we already have them as our curriculum. It's a total cost to the district of $1,500 for all of our three through five classrooms to be updated with the new materials, so that approval item is on there as well. We have SPAC, which is our State Title One Conference, where each district can send one family to the Title One Conference, and that family, they provide childcare for the children, while the adults go to sessions about a variety of topics in education. It's a great opportunity for them. So we have a Cambridge Springs family that has volunteered to go, so we'll be paying for that out of our Title One funds. Lastly, this isn't on the agenda, but it's an information item, and I did send you all an email earlier tonight. Our special education plan is due, so it has to be up for a 28-day review process, so I've sent you what I will be posting on our website and in our buildings later this week. It'll be up for 28 days, and then next month, I'll bring it back to you for approval, so then we can submit it to the state. Lastly, this afternoon, our Maplewood High School Unified Bachi Team made it to regionals. They played at Geneva College. Unfortunately, they lost in the first round to Meathville. They did win in the consolation round, but they did a great job, had a fantastic performance, and we look forward to where that program will grow in the future.
Did you say Bachi?
Bachi, yes. Yes, we have a unified Bachi team, so it's fantastic.
Mark, you want to talk briefly about the Wide Area Network Service Agreements that's on there tonight?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's an item on there. It's our WAND connections. That's our connections between each building, back to Segertown, and then from Segertown back to the IU. That is our, basically, our backbone of our network. So that agreement with the IU is on the agenda. We are actually increasing that bandwidth from 1.5 gig to two, so we're actually getting more bandwidth between the buildings and up the IU, so that should help. And it's funded by E-Rate Tier, it's category one, and I believe we're 85%.
Ninety.
Ninety percent funded on that. So not only are we only having to pay 10% of the total cost, we're also increasing our bandwidth, so the cost of the district will actually, it's a five-year agreement, over the five years, it's actually $80 less per month than our current agreement. So we're actually saving money by going, and we're getting actually more bandwidth for five years. And it's actually incremental, so in the future, if we need more bandwidth, we can actually, we're not locked into that tube, we can actually get more bandwidth now, if we did, at any time during the five years.
Questions for? I will say thank you to Patty and the team for this special education plan. It is a, it is quite an undertaking. It really is a whole-year process. Lot of information has to be gotten from the buildings. It was a, it was a team led by Mrs. Feely, and I appreciate, that's a lot of work that I did this, I did this last year in New Boys, and so, yes, thank you, Mrs. Feely, for the good work there. Facilities transportation. Mr. Luke, you wanted to go over?
Yeah.
About the vehicle for tonight we have on the agenda.
So from a facility perspective, we're looking to purchase a new vehicle for our fleet. We talked a few months ago that we had some items. We put up a municipal bid to kind of get rid of some of the older equipment in our fleet. Over the last 12 months, we've got rid of some of our 80s and 90s maintenance vehicles, and we've got into the 2000s and replaced some of our half-ton pickups with bigger-sized pickups that are capable of doing plowing and kind of multi-purpose vehicles. So we have the opportunity to buy a three-quarter ton pickup truck with low mileage, and we'll be able to add that to our fleet and get rid of an older truck that we're no longer using. So you'll see that before you tonight.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, what, do you know what we generated off of the stuff from municipal bid on the?
About $26,000.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Wow. I would not have guessed that. Yeah, I wasn't either. I'm trying to remember what all was on it.
Yeah, we had a Bobcat.
Okay, that one.
And that went for, it was, it was older 90s Bobcabs in rough shape, but it went for about $13,000, so it was about half of what we made altogether.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking like 10. Right.
No, we did pretty good.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
And we may be looking to do a summer cleanup of a couple more pieces, you know, that we'll get together, so it's, I mean, it's definitely a benefit for the district, to be able to clean that.
Now, as we get, update our trucks, which I agree, they're well past that. Are we going to, like, fluid film or something to try and get the frames and the bodies to?
Yeah, we're kind of doing that now with all of our equipment, but it's certainly part of our maintenance plan is an annual underspray of all of our vehicles.
Before the winter starts.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the second part of this one. Or before more of this winter comes.
Well, yeah. It's going to be tough right now, but.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Financial report.
Okay. You'll find the treasure reports every month with our current balances listed on there. The dispersments, again, nothing new there. All the list of dispersments that we've done in the current month, and for today. The IU5 budget book is on here, if you would like to look through it, I have it here. The main summary of that book is, like Bob had mentioned, the IU is made up, kind of like the VOTEC. We have a representative on their board, so we have to approve their budget to take back, so then they can put their budget into PDE, so it's similar to the VOT, how the VOTEC works. Bob is our representation from Pencrest on the IU5 board. So we automatically give them, this year's $54,047.38, and that goes to their operating budget. We don't have a choice, it's based on your student ADMs and your market aid ratio. PDE automatically deducts that from our subsidy, usually around December, so that is in there. The other part of the book, I have it here if anyone's curious, I'm looking through it, it's quite large. I tab it all up because it's easier to understand, but within the book, you'll find all of our programs. So we house the Bethesda program, so those are, like, pass-throughs. We receive money from other districts for those, so the rough estimate of the pass-through funds is about $615,000. That's in our budget. Again, we get the revenue side from those other districts for that, which offsets it. Unless we have students in those programs, then we pay for our students in the program. And there's about $500,000 in special ed money that we'll pay to them through the consortium for speech, deaf or hard of hearing, life skills, all the special needs classrooms. So that's the gist of the budget there. We have a couple donations, so we'd like, you know, thank the community for these. Equitable Advisors is donating 100 to 300 for the PBIS programs at each one of the schools, so we should be getting those checks if you guys approve them next month. Parker Lord made a generous donation for $8,000, and again, that goes to the PBIS program. The Class of 1966 at Segertown is donating a wall decal for $1,000. Originally, I think they wanted a scoreboard, but then they changed their mind when they realized how expensive scoreboards were. Special Olympics, we had a check for the Bachi ball team in $151.34, and that was for the polar plunge that they did out at Meathwood. The budget will be presented next month. For the public, the board has the expenditures. If you have any questions on there, just let me know before the presentation.
Questions? At this point, we're going to do a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back and start the voting as part of the meeting. Okay, number three. I don't believe there are any registered citizens comments this evening. Number four, approval of the minutes. Resolved that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approved the following minutes, February 10th, 2025, which was a regular school board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Number five, policies. You'll see first reading under policy 008, organizational chart, 103, discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting students, 104, which is the same as 103 except for staff, 121, student travel, 236.1, our threat assessment policy, and 626, the federal fiscal compliance. All of these, we are updating names in these policies, so there's no content change in any of these policies. We are updating positions and/or names in all of, in all of those policies, as I indicated. For policy approval, resolved that the Pencrest Board of School Directors approved the following policies, policy 006, under meetings, and policy 254, educational opportunity for military families.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Now, I have a real quick question on the policies, and we've changed so much movement around. The library books, where are we at on approving the last list of library books, stake purchases? Is that?
That was tabled.
When will we bring this back up, though? I mean, it's great we tabled it, but does that mean it's done, or?
No. No.
What was our, I thought our plan was bring it up, like, this month, or next month?
I think it's next, is it next month with policy? I can't remember either.
I can't either.
I have to look at policy, but I think next.
April's when it was, but.
I think the question is, the list that came initially was actually for this, this school year, 24-25.
Right. And we said we was going to move it back, so everybody had time to get a purchase on this budget season.
Correct. And with the way the policy was redesigned for the 25-26 orders, those could be coming in starting next month. So what we tabled, or what you tabled, was the orders that would have been for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, so next month, we're going to revisit that.
Right, I think it was. Right, I think a board member has to bring that back, right, Jordan?
Yeah, that's right. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, Mr. Brown's requesting to take that off the table, so he can put it off for next month.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we want to do that under new business here later, so it's part of the record, Jordan?
Jordan, can we go ahead and take the table off tonight under new business?
Yeah, that's fine, Sean.
Is that all right?
Okay.
And we'll do, then we'll do that tonight. Number six, the educational report. Resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda education items B through Q as we presented earlier this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Under facilities and transportation, I'm gonna read these separately. Under A, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the listed contracted student transportation drivers at the contracted cost.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
B, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the purchase 2008 Ford F-250 for $18,000.
So moved. Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Number eight, the financial report, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda to the financial items B through E as presented.
So moved. Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Under the personnel report, number nine, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the consent agenda personnel items B through I.
So moved. Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Under new business, A, the Crawford County, resolved that the Penn Crest Board of School Directors approved the attached board motion for the Crawford County Career and Technical Center to retain the Masero Corporation to complete demolition and construction of the outer shell of the Crawford Tech Annex at a cost of $687,000.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
And then under new business, I'd like to untable the library book for, put it on for next month's agenda.
So we have a motion to untable the?
He made the motion, we just need a second.
I was just, I was just repeating it to make sure I heard it. Good. You're untabling that to come back next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
And then under new business, this has been brought to all of our attention, especially at Cambridge Community Meeting there, but we're seeing a lot of requests about it and that's our senior early release time. It's, it's become kind of a situation in some areas. I forget who last, our last month was talking to me, but they had a great idea. Back when my girls went to school, they had senior projects they had to complete every year for part of graduation. Those senior projects, a lot of them did sports. They had sports camps for younger kids, which would also maybe help get younger children or younger students involved in sports. I don't know if this is something we can look at to help with the senior release time if we could introduce senior projects back into our curriculum. Give the kids something more to do. It could be more of, you know, volunteerism, whether it's having sports camps or working with volunteer fire department or something like that. Instead of just going home or not doing something, it would give them incentive to do something more important. So something to think about.
Yeah.
I mean, it's definitely not this year, probably won't be next year, but something that we could think about.
And we've been, Patty and I, we've been talking about that, talking, actually, we've had conversations, Mrs. Miller. We've been looking at various ways to structure that and so it's, it's on our radar.
Right. So. It just, I know a lot of parents are kind of frustrated because there's nothing more for them to do. We've taken away stuff. This would be a way to put something back that would help the community. And like I said, I know the sports camps were great. Kids love them. The kids really love doing that stuff, but so.
I think the volunteer fire department, that's a good idea too, like.
Yeah, anything is volunteer.
Because they're, you know, they're struggling, all of them are.
Big time.
You know, it's a good way to introduce people.
Every day, twice a day, at seven in the morning, at seven at night, I get a text from the 911 center with a list of anywhere from a dozen to 20 departments that are either limited service or out of service. So all the departments are hurt. Unfortunately, my department's not one of them, but.
Well, like I said, it's not that kids want to do that, but it's an, it was just an idea, an option.
Right, right.
But it's something to get kids interested in.
Absolutely. And one, one of the things I don't like is with senior release where kids are just getting to go.
Right.
They need to be involved with something and doing something. And so that's what we've been trying to figure out.
Even, I mean, even going to elementary school and volunteering to help with reading programs. Anything. But just no free passes.
Thank you. Number 11, our announcements, the board met for executive session on February 24th, 2025 for personnel legal matters. Also, the board met for executive session on March 10th, 2025 for personnel legal and confidential student issue.
Sean, can I say one more, one thing? I had three parents from Sagertown that came to me in the last like month on just bullying in itself. So I don't know what the climate is in Sagertown Elementary or High School, but it was unusual for, for me to get those comments, especially in public, which I don't like to hear. I just want to bring that up with, with you. I know it's kind of a surprise that I didn't say that to you, but I've had three parents just come up to me in the last probably three weeks and said their kids are getting bullied in Sagertown High School or Elementary, so.
Remember? Both or? Both, yeah. Okay. We have a question. Citizen comments for non-agenda items. I don't believe.
It has an unregistered.
Yeah, registered. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you.
See if any unregistered.
Yeah, I, any unregistered?
I can look at it and see.
Yeah, sure.
My name's Jeff D. Walton, Meathville. My, I have more of a question than anything is what is it looking like for the federal subsidized programs as you're trying to put a budget together? You know, they're saying they're not going to get nothing to do with education. I've got work, a couple, three of the programs are gonna probably switch to another department, like special education may go into the health and whatever. But are you getting any notion of what you can do because the state wants you to be done by a certain time? And if they're not even gonna be ready when they get money, I mean, what kind of yin and yang is gonna happen on this?
Okay. We'll touch more of that on that next month in the budget presentation. But again, I, I'm not hearing any additional information that's not out there for the public yet, so we just kind of have to wait, wait and see. But we're hoping more will be released by the time we present next month, so. Right now, I have a status quo. Those are all forward-funded programs, so right now, they're not affected. It will affect next year if it, if we did have a decrease in funding or if that went some.
And as you get on the website, they do say that it should not affect anything this year.
Correct.
And all the, all the programs that are currently funded are gonna continue to be funded. They're just going through the different, they're getting away with a lot of bureaucracy, bureaucracy and they're going straight, straight to the state.
Correct. But it's that timing between is when you try to clean it up.
No, this year, I think this year's status quo, the way I understood it, the way I read it, the way I understood it, this year's status quo.
Okay.
And by next year, it's gonna be different. I, and I don't know what that.
That's it. I mean, we need to start talking to our representatives like from Pennsylvania. Hey, when you get this other money, you know, this is.
Well, our representatives, they should be on top of it, yes.
It wouldn't hurt to get in touch with them.
Oh, no, no, I agree. I'm just saying they should be on top.
If they don't hear from you, then they don't know where you stand.
Right. Well, they should know, they should be able to figure this out.
Unfortunately, we're bound by law with our budget. We have to have ours done by June 30th, but the state and the rest of them, nobody else.
Yeah. Thank you.
The, need a motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Are you good?